Good evening. It is 6 o'clock on Thursday, October 13th. Calling to order our city council meeting. We will have an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you wish. And our invocation is being delivered by Reverend Alfred E. Johnson. Thank you.
The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, for that Spirit has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. They have sent me to heal the broken heart, to give sight to the blind, to make the lame walk, the deaf to hear, the dumb to speak, and the dead to rise to speak truth to power and responsibility to the victims, to set at liberty those held captive by manufactured lies and self-created disabilities. That is the purpose for which we live; that is the purpose for which I am before you. In honor of the mayor, the city council, to all of you here, it is a need and honor to be able to address you and give the invocation on this day. Let us bow. Dear heavenly Father, Lord God, we ask that you would bless this meeting with success. In so doing, we come before you at this time, asking that you raise up in us a mind and a spirit of kindness, of understanding and respectfulness and good intention-ness, that we will be guided by and motivated by those things that are kind as we speak to one another during this meeting. We pray also that the outcomes of our actions, the votes and the decisions do the greatest good for the greatest number of people in this great city, Pinellas Park City. And we ask that you be abiding in our hearts and our minds. On a statewide level, dear God, we ask that you, we pray for those individuals and families who are suffering from loss during the hurricanes, that they be empowered to maintain hope and are inspired to keep on keeping on during these times. We pray for the workers of this city. We pray for the first responders. We pray for law enforcement. We pray for teachers and parents and all of those that are here, the business owners. We ask that you bless our elected officials, that they do a fine and wonderful job as they are elected to do. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name and all that agree. Say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You appreciate that. First, we're going to have our Kiwanis come up, please. Come on up. And who gets the mic?
I'm with the Kiwanis Club of Pinellas Park. Five years ago, we talked about doing a large project that would benefit the children of the city for a long time. Our dream was to build a splash park for all to enjoy. For the past five years, we've been raising money for this special project. Tonight, that dream is much closer to reality. We are pleased to present this check for $60,000 to the city to help pay for the creation of the Kiwanis Splash Pad. We look forward to this being a special place for the children to enjoy for many years to come. Thank you for helping us make this happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dan.
Dan.
You got the wide angle on there?
All right, I'll take them on the interval.
Something never changes.
Junior.
Wait, one more.
Hold on, one more's coming.
He's coming.
Come on, King.
Run.
Can you get the angle from up?
Jerry.
Jerry.
Patty.
Come on, Patty.
Patty.
There's enough of them.
Need a wide angle for this.
Thank you guys so much. Dan, I have the real one.
You mean the baby that takes these person?
Oh.
Walk right down there and give it to Kellie.
Welcome, guys.
Women always get the money, Dan.
Can I have Kurt Smith and Sergeant Lynch and Corporal Bridget Hurt? Here, please.
We're not givers, we're takers.
We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to make awareness for domestic violence and for people in our community who are trying to make a difference. Whereas domestic violence can be defined as a pattern of behavior used to establish power and control over another person through fear and intimidation, often including the threat or use of physical violence. As described by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, domestic violence occurs when an individual is harmed physically, sexually, or psychologically by a current or former partner or spouse. Florida is a national leader in addressing domestic violence through the innovation, innovative policies and its efforts to provide survivors with the service and resources they need. The 10 million children exposed to domestic violence each year are a significantly higher risk of repeating the violence as victims and predators later in life. The city of Pinellas Park stands with our law enforcement offices, victims, and other brave individuals who are focused on protecting families and communities from domestic violence. Therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim October of 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all our citizens to remember the victims of domestic violence, support efforts to ensure their safety and well-being, and increase awareness to reduce future incidences. In witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on the 13th day of October of 2022. And I am here to offer this proclamation to and thank our police department for serving as well, and give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about your programs.
Thank you so much. We really understand, I think we all need to understand that domestic violence impacts all of us. It's not always black and blue. It's not always physical. It's not always tangible. You can't always see it. But anytime another person tries to control you emotionally, you know, I think a lot of our survivors that we help, and we help about 150,000 people annually across Tampa Bay, addressing food insecurity, homelessness, affordable housing, domestic violence, and really violence of every type, so whether it's economic abuse, elder abuse, but a lot of the women and children that come to us, they come to reasons in which the abuser tells them what make, when they can wear makeup and when they can't, who to like and who not to like on Facebook or social media, and they cannot go and how to spend their own money. Well, a lot of times, you look at domestic violence, long before it ever becomes physical, it's emotional, verbal, psychological. And so, we appreciate this and thank you so much for your support, and we couldn't do it without the community.
I just want to say that as partners in this as a community with law enforcement, it's everybody, we need everybody's assistance, and so, we appreciate all help that we receive because everybody has to work on trying to combat this together. So, we just want to say thank you to everybody and thank you for your support.
October is a busy month. October marks the annual observation for National Fire Prevention Week, reinforcing the critical importance of developing a home escape plan with all the members of the household and practicing it regularly. Working smoke alarms cut the chances of dying in a reported fire by half. The National Fire Protection Association recommends that at least one smoke alarm be in every level of the home, outside every sleeping area, and in all bedrooms. And from informing the public that the smoke alarm installations and maintenance is an important step towards increasing the public safety for home fires. Pinellas Park's first responders are dedicated to reducing the number of house fires and home fire deaths and injuries through the proper education. In addition, this October represents the 100th anniversary for Fire Prevention Week and the national, the nation's longest-running public health observation of record. And in 2022, Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take it personally and take personal steps to increase our safety and our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 9th through the 15th of 2022 as October Fire Prevention Week, and urge the residents to support the public safety activities and education, educational efforts in the City of Pinellas Park's Fire Department, not only during Fire Prevention Week, but all year long. In witness, I set my hand to cause the seal of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, to be affixed on this 13th day of October of 2022. And I'm going to pass this on to you guys as well as the mic, so that we can talk about some other little safety tips that we can encourage our citizens to use.
Firstly, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, Council, and our department heads throughout the city for hosting us tonight. Fire prevention is a topic that all of us are quite passionate about. We've dedicated our careers to. "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape" is getting your fire escape plan ready in your home with your family. Go home, talk about it. It seems like common sense that you don't actually think about until you have to use it, and it's better to have it before you have to use it. So, if you have any questions, you can always contact our department, see us at any of our community events that we're involved in. We try to get out there as much as possible. And again, thank you very much for having us.
Alrighty, are we ready, Ms. Alexa and chamber members? We have several out there tonight. Dan, Alicia, Terry, Marcia, Pooch. Hand the camera to somebody else. He's the official photographer for everything.
Whereas manufacturing is the cornerstone in the economics and economy of the United States as well as Pinellas Park. Recognizing October as Florida's Manufacturing Month and October 7th as National Manufacturing Day, highlighting the importance of manufacturing and drawing attention to the rewards of high skilled jobs throughout the city. This occasion shows support for the, and celebrates Florida's manufacturing and educational programs that prepare the manufacturing workers for the future. Manufacturing provides employment for over 35,000 Pinellas residents directly at the average wage of $54,000 a year and another 45,000 in supply chain support and manufacturing facilities in the county. Makes products that are diverse as components that are used in home building, aircraft, aerospace, defense, and medical industries. Whereas Pinellas, Pinellas County has hosted the largest medical manufacturing hub in the state of Florida, and the City of Pinellas Park and city council commend the support and importance of such organizations. Therefore, I, Sandra Lee Bradbury, Mayor of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, and on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim October of 2022 as Florida Manufacturing Month, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing the value of our manufacturing and the importance that they serve in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for that proclamation, Mayor Bradbury. My name is Alexis Garcia, and I am in the Community Development Department, and I work in economic development. There are approximately 100 manufacturing businesses in the city of Pinellas Park, and we are grateful for all of them. Each and every one of these businesses support each other as a community, which embodies the spirit of Pinellas Park. Although we would love to name them all, to avoid making this a very long night, I will only name a few of the wonderful manufacturers in our community. We are proud to recognize the manufacturing companies, including Lockheed Martin, which specializes in aerospace and defense, Matico Solutions, which specializes in automotive, home building, healthcare, and aerospace, and Integrity Industries, which specializes in providing quality assembly services. Manufacturers, your hard work does not go unnoticed. Thank you for your contributions to Pinellas Park. We also have Terry England.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Bless you. Thank you. It is interesting to note that when everyone shows up for work in Pinellas Park, the population almost doubles. Dan, would you like to say anything?
No, you keep going.
No, I'm fine. I'm good. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the support that the city has for our business investors.
I will say, not only do they own businesses in our community and hire employees, those employees turn, whether they live here or not, and shop in our community before they go home every night. So, it is absolutely a wonderful domino effect that we have in our community with all of our manufacturers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience while we went through the proclamations. It's always fun to do those. Yes? Okay. So, next item on our list is for any citizens that would like to come up and speak on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Ooh rah.
Happy birthday.
Not yet.
No, it's Navy.
November 10th.
Navy is today.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here before you and speak. My name is Eric Si. I am a member of the Marine Corps League Detachment here in Pinellas Park. We are the Marine Corps League Detachment 57, then after Major B. F. Hickey. We also host our meetings in the VFW Post 4364 located on City 2nd Street North. The reason for my visit here today is to inform everybody, to invite the city council, the mayor, the citizens of Pinellas Park about the car show that the Marine Corps League will be hosting. This will be our eighth annual car show. It's been known as the West Coast National Veterans Salute Benefit Car and Truck Show. This car show will be hosted, will be conducted on November 9th, or, excuse me, November 12th, Saturday, at Burt Barracuda Harley-Davidson. There will post about 43 different classes of vehicles out there and award probably about 100 different trophies. This event goes between 8 and 2 on that Saturday. And of course, if anybody here has a car that they would like to enter that is available, otherwise, it would be free to the public, and we would like to see everybody attend. Thank you very much.
If you would, make sure the clerk gets a flyer, and we'll put it up on our rolling screen that all the citizens see.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Is there any other citizens that would like to come up and speak on any item that's not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none. Moving on to have anybody that will be speaking on any items that are quasi judicial to stand and be sworn in, please.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Moving on to Section 2, Approval of Minutes. Vice Mayor Sebel.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the regular council minutes of September 15th, 2022, as on file in the city clerk's office.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by city council? Anybody in the audience that has any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 3, Public Hearings, Item P1, Resolution Number 22-24.
Resolution Number 22-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, vacating an approximately 160-foot-long-by-16-foot-wide right-of-way and the adjoining approximately 104-foot-long-by-15.5-foot right-of-way east of 52nd Street North and south of 78th Avenue North, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Item P1, Resolution Number 22-24, public hearing, first and final reading. This is quasi judicial. I'm opening the public hearing and turning it over to Erica.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I am here to present case number VAC 0722-00004, and I'm Erica Linquist, Planning and Development Services Director. So, the request is to vacate the approximately 160-foot-long-by-16-foot-wide right-of-way and the adjoining 104-foot-long-by-15.5-foot-wide right-of-way located east of 52nd Street and south of 78th Avenue. There are no utilities in these right-of-ways, and it serves no purpose. The location is right here across the street at the Pinellas Animal Hospital property. And this slide shows the right-of-way to be vacated. This is the 1925 plat. Shown in here is, in red, is what is requested to be vacated today. Shown in green are the rights-of-way that have already been vacated. So, this request meets a vacation of right-of-way requirements per the Land Development Code, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. On September 1st, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case with the following condition, that the adjacent properties be consolidated by replating. And staff also recommends approval with the condition that the properties be consolidated by replating. And I will show you here, it is these three properties that we are asking to consolidate with the plat. And I am here for any questions. Thank you.
Are all three of these owned by the same company?
Yes, they are.
Is it the animal hospital?
Yes.
No additional questions from city council? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Councilor Mullins.
Yes, Mayor, I make a motion we adopt Resolution Number 22-24, public hearing, first and final reading.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section 4, Consent Agenda, Item C1.
Item C1 is to approve the designation of Councilwoman Reed to serve as the voting delegate, and Vice Mayor Sebel as the alternate at the National League of Cities Annual Conference in Kansas City, Missouri, on November 19th, 2022. Item C2 is Resolution Number 22-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, amending Resolution Number 21-11 by amending the city's administrative fee schedule as listed in Exhibit A, providing for repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for an effective date. Item C3 is authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement between the Tampa Bay Community Development Corporation, DBA Sun Coast Housing Connections, and the City of Pinellas Park for housing counseling for low- to moderate-income households. Item C4 is authorization for the mayor to sign a joint during consent to the First Amendment to Declaration of Covenants, Easements, and Restrictions for Artistry at Park Station with the Pinellas Park Community Redevelopment Agency, Namaste 76 LLC, and the Artistry at Park Station Association, Incorporated. Item C5 is ordinance number 4172, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, adopting a master plan and supporting documentation for residential planned unit development, RPUD overlay, with underlying duplex residential R4 zoning on 3.43 acres of land located at 7041 34th Street, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and made a part here of, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, providing for an effective date. Item C6 is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Sage View Advisory Group for a 457B deferred compensation plan consultant at cost based on the proposer's submittal for a five-year period with one additional five-year renewal option. Item C7 is Resolution Number 22-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pinellas Park, providing for revisions to the classification and pay plan, providing for an increase in the wage rate provided to employees covered by the City of Pinellas Park Classification and Pay Plan, providing for an effective date. Item C8 is Resolution Number 22-22, a resolution adopting an updated car allowance schedule for city council, department administrators, and division directors, providing for an effective date. Item C9 is to approve the appointment of Brett Schlotter to the Pinellas Park Firefighters' Pension Board of Trustees to fill the unexpired term of Arthur Winquist with term to expire October 1st, 2023. Item C10 is to approve the reappointment of Mariel Bruno to serve as a trustee of the Police Officers Pension Board with a term to expire October 1st, 2026. Item C11 is authorization to make final payment for the purchase and installation of adaptive playground equipment from Game Time, a playcore company, at a cost of $65,645.90 at Broadrick Park. Item C12 is authorization to purchase from the Confiscated Property Fund one commercial Spirit CSC 900 stair climber from Bandit Fitness for a total of $7,899. Item C13 is authorization for the city manager to negotiate with firms recommended by the valuation committee and order of preferences recommended for the Public Safety Campus Architects Engineering Services for RFQ 21/006. Item C14 is authorization for the mayor to sign Task Order 062022 under the City of Pinellas Park contract for engineering consultant services provided by Pinoni Associates, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $125,985. Item C15 is authorization to enter into a master agreement with Pinoni Associates, Incorporated, to provide Police Officers Pension Board with a term to expire October 1st, 2026. Item C11 is authorization to make final payment for the purchase and installation of adaptive playground equipment from Game Time, a playcore company, at a cost of $65,645.90 at Broderick Park. Item C12 is authorization to purchase from the Confiscated Property Fund one Commercial Spirit CSC 900 Stair Climber from Bandit Fitness for a total of $7,899. Item C13 is authorization for the city manager to negotiate with firms recommended by the Evaluation Committee and order of preferences recommended for the Public Safety Campus Architects Engineering Services for RFQ 21/006. Item C14 is authorization for the mayor to sign Task Order 06/2022 under the City of Pinellas Park contract for engineering consultant services provided by Pinoni Associates, Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $125,985. Item C15 is authorization to enter into a master agreement with Pinoni Associates, Incorporated, to provide consulting, continuing contract engineering consultant services in an amount negotiated on a per-project task order basis not to exceed $500,000 per project. Item C16 has been withdrawn. Item C17 is authorization for the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Board of County Commissioners and local municipalities controlling illicit discharges as necessary to meet the requirements of Chapter 62-624 FAC from their respective MS4 to another MS4 or to waters of the state. Item C18 is authorization for the mayor to sign a standard grant agreement between the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the City of Pinellas Park for the Pinellas Park Youth Sports Complex. That concludes tonight's consent agenda, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's where we read.
Mayor Bradbury, regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, Item C1 through C18, inclusive with Item C5 being first reading prior to public hearing, and Items C2, C7, and C8 being first and final reading, and Item C16, C16 being withdrawn prior to the council meeting. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, October 27th, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion by city council for Items C1 through 18? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on these items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have any regular agenda items, which is Section 5. So Section 6 says comments from city council and staff. Vice Mayor Sebel.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
I have a few things. So on, went to Sacred Heart, their grand opening for their 50th anniversary festival's going on, so there was a few of us there, it was a pretty awesome night last night, so go visit them. November 5th is the barbecue, I'm excited for that, they're gonna have the rodeo, right? Yeah. And then I know our staff came back from down south and wanted to say thank you to everybody that went down there and helped everybody, but also all the staff that covered while they were gone, that took up their stuff, and just, you know, it's, we were blessed and anything we can do to help them down there is amazing. And who else? Happy birthday to Ms. Hannah D. Bolt, today is her birthday, her 19th birthday, so, yeah, Bart's daughter, yeah, it's a great deal.
I didn't think Bart was that old.
We were at Oktoberfest last weekend, it was off the chain. I've never seen it like that, but we had, I mean, there was people everywhere, but it was amazing. And George is here again, we get to do it again this weekend, so wait for me to get my plate before everybody comes out, because I didn't get to eat, but it was amazing. I got to see-
The food's still good even when it's cold.
It was, and everybody was happy, it was just a really, really good time, if you haven't been, it was a lot of fun. I saw Rick, he was feeling better, so, you know, prayers with him. And then the Ag Farm, we have a new cow named Wade, who's awesome, and it sounds like they're gonna be opening for visitors, so I'll let Angela talk on that. And that's enough, that's all I got, but thanks to everybody. I know, I'm so excited, it's, it's like-
Is his whole name is Reba?
No, it's not. Stop it.[1487.21][1487.21](laughing) But, no, so other than that, it's, I'm excited, I'm excited to be here, this is a great city, we have a lot going on.
I also went down to see Rick today, and he's ready to get out of there whenever he can.[1502.21][1502.21](laughing) So he must be doing better.
We always want Rick to be doing good. Staff?
I just have a couple things, Sacred Heart's still going on, and Oktoberfest's still going on this weekend, so if you haven't been, get out there or go again. Also, four Saturday block party coming up October 22nd, it's a Halloween edition, I guess they're doing pumpkin carving, and there's a pet costume contest, so lots of stuff going on in the village, and then of course, on Halloween night, October 31st, is the Halloween Tree Trail at England Brothers Park. That's all I have.
And I'm gonna judge at the pet contest, so bring the animals.[1553.42][1553.42](laughing) I love the animals, it's gonna be a blast. Yeah, bring Fred.
Ms. Angela?
We are wrapping up the school season at the end of the month, oh, thank you, on Saturday, the 29th, noon to 3, so it is doggy day, bring your dog, costume contest for the dogs, and yes, we're finally cracking the gates open a little bit at the farm, we, I want to give credit to our three farm ladies that we have. For the rest of the month, Monday through Friday, 1 to 3, folks can stop by, and Saturday, 10 to 2, we are reserving mornings during the weekdays for school visits and organized group tours, and we'll be hoping to get more and more volunteers so we can keep expanding and offering more and more to folks in the community that want to see the farm, but excited to share it now.
Staff?
I'll pass.
You pass, okay. Chiefs? No? No? Sorry? No? Okay. Oktoberfest, 5:30 to 10:00 this Friday and this Saturday, correct?
Correct.
Alrighty.
I suggest you come on Friday.
(laughing) Friday's more of a family night, so those of you that have kids that want to come out and let them kind of experience some of the folk dancing and things of that nature, Friday's a good night for that. Saturday's, I guess you would call, more of a date night?
Oh, it was crazy.
It was family night also.
It was, yeah.
It was, on a kid.
So, it was a blast, I got to go last Friday and tap a real keg for the first time ever in my life, with a hammer.[1651.01][1651.01](laughing) So it was, it was absolutely wonderful, and they've been there almost 60 years?
We were celebrating on 71st.
71st, okay.
In Pinellas Park.
Yes, yes. And you have to go on their website because they are open during the week for different occasions, so make sure that you guys not only support them this weekend, but support them year-round. And just want to say thank you, as Patty said, to our employees that shined and went down to South Florida, and the employees that shined to take over while they were gone, and wish everybody a blessed couple weeks till we see you again, the meeting is adjourned.[1710.96][1710.96](applause)[1711.96]